Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting, January 23rd, 2018. Vicki, if you'd be so kind, is for role.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. I'm going to ask our fire chief, as you know, we had an incident at Shelter Creek. We also had an incident on Garden where our fire services and additional public safety and other staff did an exceptional job. So, Fire Chief, if you would lead us in the pledge this evening.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Other announcements, it's not listed, but we are going to have two items. One, as I was at City Hall today, and some of you may know, that the wooden sculpture has arrived at City Hall, which has a lot of historical perspective. And I've asked David if he would be so kind to give us just a little background to it. It's something of historic to our community, and also David has been very instrumental and I think very excited and seen this project all the way through, so I'd like him to give us a little update.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd be happy to do that. At property at 324 Florida Avenue, we discovered that within a workshop on that property, there had been a wood carving, a tableau, that had been stored in a workshop there for maybe 30 years, exposed to the elements. And as we worked with the property owner to talk about reuse of that site, and eventually reuse of that site as a future park site, the city was able to acquire the property and also acquire the wood carving. This wood carving was crafted by a master wood carver of Swiss descent. It was made in about 1915, and it was displayed in San Francisco at the 1939 Golden Gate International Exposition. We discovered this, this tableau, it was in poor condition. It had deteriorated quite substantially, but the city was able to acquire it, as it acquired the property, and was able to work with a restoration firm to stabilize it, do partial restoration, and with the assistance of a variety of individuals, be able to bring this tableau to life, this wood carving to life, and place it at City Hall. So today, after several years of work and many people involved in this effort, many, many people involved in this effort, the wood tableau is now displayed at City Hall, 567 El Camino Real, in our lobby. And it really is a magnificent piece of artwork, and I encourage you all to come and take a look at it. It's now on display there and available for your enjoyment. Thank you.
Dave?
And what we'll do is we'll put out some information about the tableau itself. The name of the tableau is "The Independence of Switzerland," and it really represents the founding of Switzerland itself. And we've got a piece here that we'll display at City Hall that tells the history of this piece. Essentially, the tableau shows three representatives of the three areas of what is now Switzerland, Uri, Schwarz, and Unterwalded. And it depicts really the founding of this area, this area of Switzerland, in August of 1291. So, we've got a full write-up. It'll be with the tableau in City Hall that'll give you some history on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item we wanted to bring up, there's been some questions, there's obviously been some emails, there has been concerns, comments in regards to, as every community faces, the homeless situation, not only in our community, but neighboring communities. Even some of your councilmembers went up to Sacramento for a conference, and we were engaging other communities to find out where they're, what difficulties they're having and what successes they may be having. So, I'd ask our city manager and staff if they could bring us a little up-to-date and some information on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to ask Police Chief Barbara Rini in just a moment to give some particulars about the situation as we're currently experiencing it in San Bruno and actions that are being taken. The comment that I wanted to make, though, is just to, again, for the City Council and the public's information, highlight the fact that homeless is the homeless crisis, if you will, not just in San Bruno, but in many different areas, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, throughout our state and throughout our nation, is a complicated one. It's one that does not have an easy or quick solution, and it's one that requires a comprehensive look and consideration of the various factors that lead to individuals becoming homeless, staying homeless, and that can compromise their ability or access to resources to end their homelessness. This is not a situation that our police department or our city organization can enforce its way out of. It's one, as I said, that requires a comprehensive look. Arresting people, forcing people to move on, and a variety of other enforcement types of techniques may be one aspect of the solution, but it is not the comprehensive solution that this community increasingly is looking for us to provide. As such, again, I'm going to ask Chief to make a few remarks in just a moment, but staff is recommending for your consideration tonight that we move forward within the next approximately 60 days to put together a study session, conversation, in which the City Council, the public, potentially experts in variety of areas that are relevant to this issue, come together to talk about the situation in San Bruno and what, from, again, a comprehensive strategy standpoint, we might better address some of the issues that we're observing and that we're obviously concerned about. So with that, I'd like to ask Chief Barbara Rini to make a few comments.
Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. It's an issue that's on the radar, not only in our organization, but, as mentioned before, our neighboring jurisdictions, and it's a topic of conversation among local police chiefs on a regular basis. I'd like to thank the city manager for pointing out that although law enforcement interacts with homeless individuals on a regular basis, pretty much because of the nature of what we're asked to do, if we look at this from a law enforcement perspective, we've learned, both at the state level and nationally, that we're going to experience limited to no success. It's not something that can be looked at as a criminal justice issue or something that can be enforced or solved with a pair of handcuffs or taking somebody to jail. As mentioned earlier, the enforcement component is something that we try to avoid talking about because it just doesn't happen. There are no statutes to effectively enforce to help eliminate homeless. As this council knows, the city and the police department have partnered with an organization called Life Moves that has an agreement both with the county and specific agreements with individual cities, of which San Bruno is one, to actually put homeless outreach workers in the field. We've been working with Life Moves for about 18 months. We've recently upgraded that relationship or enhanced that relationship. For the first year and a half, we had access to an outreach worker that was basically a responder. When we received complaints or we received issues, we would contact this individual and ask this individual to go to a specific location, contact certain individuals and offer them services, and persuade them to accept those services. While that was great, and it gave officers a resource, rather than to just kind of throw their hands up when folks would not be receptive to help, it was a reactive effort that experienced some success, but limited success. So what we've done is we've tried to take a more proactive stance with Life Moves. They've added an additional staff member. Instead of simply responding to complaints, we now have, or they now have, more of a capacity to be proactive and actually seek out individuals who are living on the street and offer them services and develop relationships to hopefully convince them to accept those services. That enhancement has taken place over the last 60 days. So for the last two months, we've had an additional outreach worker responsible for the city of San Bruno, and she proactively goes out looking to interact with homeless individuals, offering them services, trying to convince them to help their situation. We oftentimes go out with that person because we have a good relationship, and we interact with these people on a regular basis and oftentimes know them by name. We try to work together. It's important to remember, though, when either a police officer or a Life Moves homeless outreach worker is called or responds to a specific situation, it's not going to be a quick fix. If we're called, or we call an outreach worker to go interact with a homeless individual, it does not mean that that situation's going to be rectified right away. There is no, we very rarely run into any legal authority that allows us to simply remove somebody from a public street. The law simply doesn't allow that, and more often than not, it takes time for the outreach worker to develop relationships with these individuals, to develop some sense of trust before they're willing to explore accepting services. We do arrest homeless individuals. I don't want to say that we don't have regular interaction. We do. They're out there, they're in the public. We probably have more of an interaction with them than other people just because of their lifestyle. Most of these arrests include very minor-level theft-related arrests, alcohol and drug-related arrests where they're issued a citation. Typically, these folks will not go to their court date. It'll result in a warrant for their arrest. We'll eventually arrest them, take them to jail, where they'll spend just a few days in jail, and they'll be right back where they began. We also often evaluate them for a mental health condition to make sure it's safe for them to be doing whatever they're doing or living wherever they're living. And that standard is whether or not they can care for themselves. Being homeless does not mean you can't care for oneself. That's been legally decided, and it's a clear point. But the police officers do have the authority, when individuals display some type of mental health issue that compromises their own safety or the safety of others, to forcibly take them to a treatment center. And we do that frequently. That center is authorized to hold and evaluate an individual for up to 72 hours. Oftentimes, we'll see that that individual is back on the street within six to eight There is, as I mentioned before, there's no example of a successful enforcement or law enforcement approach to that. The police department shares the frustration of the homeless issue, and we want to be part of the solution. However, we're not the primary piece to the final puzzle as part of that solution. We are an active participant. We want to be part of the answer, but we think that there's a bigger issue. And responding to homelessness is not the answer. Asking questions of why homeless individuals gravitate to a certain area or decide to congregate or frequent certain areas, we think is a bigger and more important question, and we think seeking to prevent homelessness would be much more effective than trying to react to it. And we'd love to be part of that process, and we're happy to do whatever we can to be part of that. But it's important to ask that question of why we're experiencing these types of problems. We do it with other issues in law enforcement. If we have a burglary problem, or we have a robbery issue, or there's something going on, not only do we react to it, but we try to figure out, hey, why is this happening and what can we do to prevent it? To this point, we haven't taken that step with this issue, not just in San Bruno, I mean universally. And from a law enforcement perspective, unfortunately, that far exceeds what we do, and it inquires some collaboration in the involvement of a lot more stakeholders. I will, in closing, I don't mean to take up too much of the time, there are examples, there'll be questions about enforcement, there are examples of neighboring jurisdictions or local jurisdictions that have created downtown units and put officers in the downtown area, and it's been effective. In speaking with those police chiefs who've employed that tactic and have the luxury of having those resources, they're displacing their homeless people. Their homeless problem is not going away. It does make downtown merchants happy because the frequency of the interaction with law enforcement has persuaded some of these individuals to go elsewhere within these cities, but it doesn't mean that the problem is going away. It just means that we're pushing it to another portion of the city. Not to say that's the wrong answer, I'm just, full disclosure, there are three or four cities that have taken that approach, and that's the feedback we've received from those entities. So, that's all I really have. That's kind of our philosophy and where we're at and what we're dealing with. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anything? Chief, thank you for your comment. And city manager, you'd said about 60 days?
Yes, we'd like some time to put together a thoughtful presentation that you could really take some time to engage with, discussion at the City Council level, with some resources to prompt your discussion.
Thank you. One final announcement, just as a reminder from our last meeting, if you have an item that you want to speak on on the agenda, we have speaker cards over by Vicki that are available, and if you'd fill that out, that'd be greatly appreciated. She'll call you up. And, yes, Mr. Seymour?
Could I just make a comment over there?
Absolutely.
Mayor Medina, I just want to thank you very much for bringing this discussion and this issue to City Council. I think it came because of some emails I was sending, and I'm sure some others were sending those emails as well. I'd like, when this was put together, it would be great if members of the public residents could be part of this group that looks at ways to address this issue. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, okay.
Just take that in consideration.
Being a stakeholder.
What's that?
Being a stakeholder.
Yes. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Rena, did you have something regarding the homeless? Okay.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about this issue. Thank you so much. To the chief, there is, I want to talk about this particular homeless person that is between the flower shop and a restaurant. This person, I believe, needs help but rejects the help. However, if 5150 will be a solution to take him, it's cold up there. We went to the restaurant, and it didn't smell good, so we had to, like, leave. Is any way that he can be basically 5150 so service can be provided to this gentleman? Because most definitely, he needs help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, again, is it, yes, Jamie? Absolutely, regarding the homeless item, yes?
I'll be very brief.
Thank you.
I just want to mention, in the six years that I've been on San Mateo Avenue, just in the last year, I've seen an enormous decrease in the homeless issues that we've had on San Mateo Avenue. And I want to thank the chief and city manager and city council for implementing these improvement plans that you have so far. It's helping a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, again, speaker cards. I also wanted to acknowledge before us, we have a bouquet of flowers that we usually do. This one is from City Hall, and this is, and a card is on it to acknowledge our city clerk, who we lost on Monday morning. And it's from the staff, her colleagues, and of course, the officials here, so I want to acknowledge that this evening. I also want to thank, first and foremost, Vicki. It was very shocking for her to hear the news on Monday morning, and I was at City Hall, and one of the first things she said is, "I will be there Tuesday night." So, thank you. All right, let's move on to presentations. Receive annual report from the San Mateo Mosquito and Vector Control District. We're going to be having a presentation from the assistant manager, Brian Weber.
Thanks for having me. And, like you said, I'm from San Mateo County, Mosquito and Vector Control District, assistant manager, but I also run the operations. Let's see, okay, there we go. So who are we? We've existed for over 100 years. We're an independent special district, so your tax dollars pay for our services, but they stay dedicated to protecting public health and controlling vectors, which is anything that can transmit, you know, insect or animal that can transmit a disease to a human. Part of our mission is just to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of San Mateo County through a plan program to monitor and reduce mosquitoes and other vectors. That sums it up. Okay, this gives you kind of an overview of what we're talking about here. So, these are the types of calls we get. We have fleas, mosquitoes, raccoons, cockroaches, yellow jackets, rats, bedbugs, and even when people call and say they're getting bites and they don't know why, we respond. We try and figure out why people are receiving bites in their household through various measures. So, these are some typical calls we get. We're doing much more work out there in the community, in your marshes and different things like that, as I'll get to later, but these are some of the general things we do. We do mosquito control proactively on a regular basis, and a lot of these are calls that we react to from residents. Oftentimes, we're providing information, and here is taking an integrated approach. So, this shows you some work in the marsh. Integrated pest management is basically what we do. So, quite often, when people think of mosquito control, they think of a truck driving down the street, just putting pests aside out, but that's far from the truth. So, first and foremost, the biggest thing we do is surveillance. What we're looking for is based on historical trends, inspections for technicians on the ground, we're doing surveillance. So we're actually looking for mosquito larvae through, like, a trap. I don't know if this has a light on here. A trap you see in the upper right there, that would be looking for adult mosquitoes, or in the marshes or backyard fish ponds, we'd be looking for the larvae. Based on that surveillance, we're going to look for methods first, if we can populate that area with mosquito fish, which we breed and distribute to the community, and then we look to do physical control. So, that picture on the right where you see a huge crane removing dirt, that's a large project in Redwood Shores where they flooded some salt marsh, some old salt evaporator areas that used to breed large amounts of mosquitoes. That's a form of physical control, allowing the tide to get in there. But physical control's also us coming in your backyard and dumping out all your containers, so. So that's the majority, 99.9% of what we're doing, in addition to some larval mosquito control. So, no large-scale adult applications have happened in San Bruno. So, specific to your city, the next few slides will be related specifically to your city. So, we have 174 active inspection sites, meaning that they have a water source that is actively breeding mosquitoes. Of course, we're there to eliminate that, but that means that the homeowner either hasn't removed their pond, got it flowing, or there's an open space area that has some water, which I'll get to in a minute. In 2017, we had 94 service calls, all related to those images that I showed you earlier, and 52 traps to monitor your mosquito population in 2017. So these are our service calls on a map, and I hope everyone can kind of understand where we are. But this is what I like to see, is somewhat even distribution. I know up towards, I think that's 280, that maybe not as many. In situations like that, where we see a community that's not being reached as often, what we'll quite often do is do more surveillance up there, maybe try and do some outreach, you know, reach as many people as we can, but try and figure out why we're not getting calls from that community. So, we have an individual who reaches out and does that in our public relations. But these are all service calls related to your city. Okay, so these are the kind of things that we see. We had a handful of these in your city this year. These are broken pipes under homes. These happen in every community, but these are often the types of problems, along with your city storm drain system, that create the type of mosquitoes that can carry West Nile virus. So, if you're getting mosquito bites, we always encourage everybody to call, because if we don't know about the problem, we can't, you know, work with the resident and some of your city staff to try and get the individual to fix the problem. So after that picture, I figure I'd put in a little bit nicer one. You can see there's some possums here. There's a, this is a possum family that was under our house in San Bruno. So, just to clarify, we don't do the actual removal is what we do, is come out, we do a consultation with the residents. We want to permanently eliminate the problem. So, just like rats, or possums, or raccoons, they can get into your home, and you can pay a pest control company to eliminate the rats, but if you don't block up the areas like these screens you see in the upper left, or over in the upper right, if you don't eliminate those sources of them getting inside the property, it's never going to permanently resolve the issue, because they just keep coming back in, these animals. As you know, if you walk around at night, they're all over the place, and they're not going to stop coming into your home because it's a nice, warm place at night. This was just something I mentioned last year. We got a lot of calls about this theater site. It is now gone, so this will not be in my slide next year, but I just wanted to bring that up. Something that we do related to your community is do applications in Mills Field, which of course is the airport property. Sometimes you guys will see a helicopter flying over, and this is because our staff cannot penetrate the vegetation and cover the area that needs to be applied. I like this image because it really gives an idea of how vast it is, you know, in comparison to the airport. And here's another really neat picture we have. So, you know, we help load the, what we do is we apply a larvicide granule. So that is a bacteria that targets mosquitoes, and it's specific to mosquito larvae in the water. So it doesn't create havoc amongst other organisms, or fish, if they exist. Probably they don't exist out there based on the fact we're treating for mosquitoes, but if that is a concern. Any other organisms in the water are not affected by this application. So, it's a granular material quite often put on corn cob. It drops directly below the helicopter, and what they do is just a nice even using a GPS application of a granular material to that water. So, these typically begin in July, and they run through September, October. And of course, because we're dealing with biology, I can't always figure out exactly when the applications have to occur. So, again, going back to surveillance, we put traps out, we monitor those populations of mosquitoes. These are some of the locations out there, and based on the data we receive back, that's when we decide to start doing these applications. So, we have an individual on the ground who goes through Mills Field, and then we also put some traps out there for adults and looking for mosquito larvae. Okay, so, based on, this is another area in Mills Field. This is some work we did with the city, and again, we want to thank the city. This was an abandoned, either storm sewer or sewer line, I'm not quite sure, but what they did was, it's not the prettiest picture, but this is effective mosquito control, no use of pesticide, they blocked up the old sewer main, and ever since this call, we haven't received any complaints. But a year or two years ago, this was creating a lot of mosquito problems, either with standing, some sort of standing water down below, whether it was rainwater or groundwater, we're unsure, but by blocking this up, it permanently alleviated the situation. So, just a little bit of update on West Nile virus. This was one of the slowest years that we've had, I think the quietest year since 2013, and years before that. But that doesn't mean the district isn't doing work related to West Nile virus. We still collected 99 birds and tested them in-house. We have DNA equipment in-house and the specialty to do the DNA reading, looking for pathogens such as Lyme disease, West Nile virus, and others. I won't go down the list. But we tested 99 birds. One was positive. In other typical years when we had a lot of West Nile virus, we put the 20 traps around a positive bird, looking for positive mosquitoes, to see if we need to take further action. Last year, we had no mosquitoes test positive. So, just for some perspective, our worst year was about 15 mosquito traps testing positive. So, those always require further action, and none of those have occurred in San Bruno. Okay, 80s egypti surveillance, you're probably wondering what that is. 80s egypti is the mosquito that can carry Zika virus that was obviously in the news and everybody heard about. We, at present time, have not detected this mosquito. Therefore, technically Zika virus, besides some other ways I won't get into, cannot be transmitted by a mosquito in your city. So, not particularly in your community, but there are certain locations that we choose that, you know, whether they're close to a cemetery or whatnot, areas conducive to this mosquito being introduced to our community. So, we had a special individual this year, or last year in 2017, do some surveillance looking for that mosquito, and it's very important, because we had an introduction in Menlo Park. in Menlo Park back in 2013, we were actually able to eradicate that mosquito. Without that eradication, then we run the risk of contracting, I'll just move past this one, contracting dengue fever, chikungunya, yellow fever, Zika. So, all of those right now are extremely low. The real risk still continues to be West Nile virus, although it doesn't get the media attention, because we don't have those mosquitoes currently. And, one of the bigger things is we're having an open house, April 26th. I'm sure your trustee, Robert, will bring that up again. However, I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Everyone from the public is welcome. We love city managers, council members, anyone who is interested in hearing more about the district. Honestly, you know, kids are welcome. We take Boy Scout troops, but honestly, I've never heard a council member or a city official come and be disappointed. It's quite unique. It's a two-story building. It's about 15 years old. We have cool equipment, like an airboat and this ATV, and you might run into my kids there on the left at the, at the open house. But, we do get a lot of kids who come through, and there's actually stuff for the kids to do. We keep that in mind, so please keep that in mind. We're at 1351 Ron's Road, and it's on April 26th. So, everyone is welcome. And, I left some brochures back here. Remember, related to dead birds when it's West Nile virus season, which is technically almost anytime it's warm here on the peninsula. So, if you see dead birds, you can go to westnile.ca.gov, or you can call the district, and we can, we'll come and pick up the bird, and we'll test it the same day. So, if we don't know about the bird, we only have so many people on the ground. We have nine technicians countywide. So, if you don't call, we don't know, and any other issues, like I said, mosquitoes, you're getting bites, or just have any questions about anything related to what I talked about, please call the district, and there's plenty of people there to help you out or respond when necessary. I put some brochures at the back. Thank you, Brian.
Any questions in council? No, Brian, thank you very much. And also, as you mentioned, Robert, who is our trustee, who does a great job, and we appreciate you being down here this evening, and Robert, we appreciate once again you continuing to do your, the job that you do to represent us.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on to review of agenda. Staff has asked that there be a continuance on item eight, and David, did you want to...
Mr. Mayor and council members, item eight is our public hearing item tonight, and staff wanted to bring to your attention that yesterday, we received correspondence from an individual about this item, and he indicated that there had been past discussions and understandings with the Community College District related to protecting sensitive environmental habitats and species at Skyline College. This project is referred to as the Skyline Residential Project. It involves about eight acres of property at Skyline College. Gentlemen raised questions as to whether certain past environmental mitigation measures at Skyline College had been fully implemented. Since receiving that correspondence just yesterday afternoon, our staff has reached out to the environmental consultant, who we've been working with on this project. We reviewed the issues with the consultant. We also reached out to the Community College District representatives. We've done quite a bit of research, but we've only had about 24 hours to do that work. So far, I would say that we have not discovered any areas of particular concern. We are continuing to do our research, and we believe we need more time to fully understand this correspondence, do our full research, document our findings, and then proceed with the project in a way that's appropriate. To do our work and to document our findings, we're asking that this item be continued to a date certain. We're asking that you continue this to February 27th, your regular meeting of February 27, 2018. I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Any questions to staff? Council have any problem with it being continued to February 27th? Okay, consider that. Let's move on to item number six, approval of minutes. We had the special meeting of January the 8th, and the special and regular city council meetings of January 9th, 2018. Any comments or any changes? If not, minutes will stand approved, and we'll move on to consent.
Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Through the chair?
Irene.
I'd like to pull F and G, please.
F and G to be pulled. Anything else?
No. Move to approve the rest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Whoever wants. Motion made in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We had items F and G pulled. Item F is resolution accepting the Mason and Easton Culvert Repair Project as completed. Irene.
I just wanted to pull this to congratulate staff on a project well done. It was brought in under budget, and it was brought in with no outstanding anything. So, I just want to thank you very much.
Do motion.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion's made in second to approve item F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. We'll move on to item G, resolution accepting the Crestmore Canyon Sewer Replacement Project as complete. Irene.
A similar compliment. Not only was this one brought in under budget, it was proposed to take 60 days to do, and it only took 31. So, again, congratulations to staff and to our contractor. Job well done. Thank you. And I'll move to approve the item. Second.
We have a motion and second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Ayes have it. Okay, we've pulled item eight, so we're at public comment.
It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law.
Who do we have?
I have one right now from...
Reina, public comment?
I'm sorry, Sandra.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, Sandra, for items not on the agenda.
Hello, Sandra Perez-Vargas. I live on Mastic Avenue, and I want to discuss specifically the case of a fire that happened this last Saturday on Garden Avenue, a few blocks from my home. This particular property has been reported to code enforcement, city management, for over a decade. It's a hoarder's house, and you don't have to have access to the inside of the house to see what was going on. Not only was the front overloaded with garbage, the sites had tons of bags of recycling material. It was crumbling. The structure looked like it was completely off, like it was going off to one side, and I'm just having trouble understanding what took so long for any attention to go to it. It would be there no response, or people are mentally ill, we can't tell them what to do, and I understand that, but when somebody's personal decision for their home and not keeping up endangers the rest of the community, I think it's irresponsible for the city not to act sooner. Had it been a windy day, the flames, I'm sure, would have just, you know, kept jumping to their houses. And, I've talked to many residents in that area, and they've said that they've been asking for some attention over the years, and there are so many homes like that in San Bruno, not just this one. There's another one on East. Once again, the woman is mentally ill. It's difficult to even see the entrance of her house. There's bugs, bushes, and I just, I'm having trouble understanding how code enforcement can't get beyond, oh, they're mentally ill, when they pose a danger to the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Vicki, that you have cards for?
Reina Burgos. Thank you so much. Two concerns. I echo what Sandra just brought up, and also the illegal dumping. So, the fire was very close to our area as well, and I'm going to make a comment and also will later respond. The two weeks ago, basically, the project, the well project that the gentleman presented was rejected because of safety. Okay, I totally understand that, but also, this home was also unsafe, and the city, the city knew, and because of the numerous complaints. I also was going to talk about other homes that actually need attention, and I'm not here to point fingers. I'm here to basically, I want to volunteer to, how can we improve if the family is unable to keep or remove the trash? We willing. Basically, I want to put my name on it, so I can volunteer to help remove trash or help, you know, pay whatever the family needs, but can we have a proactive approach to remedy this situation on other homes they are in San Bruno? Because I know it could have been worse, but we don't want it to be another situation with the PG&E, that scale. We don't want that. So, I'm putting myself up there as a volunteer. I want to participate if there is a committee. That's one issue. Second issue is the legal dumping. It is getting absolutely out of control. So, and I don't think that San Bruno has the resources to basically go around the city picking up people that are dumping on the street. It's absolutely unexcusable. So, I propose this, that the city should take very strong approach, especially these are for renters, for landlords. If the tenants leave trash or items on the sidewalk, then San Bruno should build landlords, or at least enforce to have a city manager on site, or at least once a week, to go supervise to make sure that properties are kept, because it is, it is basically picking up the dumping, it's not the solution. It is the solution, but at the same time, the city doesn't have the resources. So, I'm willing also to be part of the committee, and so whatever it needs, I'm here, my husband and I, we're willing to, we want to be part of the solution. I'm not here to point fingers, but I want a solution. I don't want to see our neighborhoods to be trashed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else, Vicki?
No.
We have another speaker, former vice mayor, Ken Ibera.
Thanks for the introduction, Honorable Mayor, City Council. You all look very good up there. I had no intention of coming here, returning here with, under these circumstances, but Amy and I felt compelled, because I've known this lady for over 30 years. I've sat up there at the dais and looked down at her for 12 years, and I am just so sad and shocked that Carol Bonner, in what should be her golden years, is no longer with us. So, I'm just here to honor her, pass on my heartfelt condolences and sympathies to Jesse and the family, and to a grateful community. People just, she was honored just less than two months ago, the face of City Hall, and it's just another shock in our lifetime to no longer have her around. So, just felt that that was something that would at least comfort me and comfort some of those that Carol has truly missed, even in just the last couple of days. So, thank you all for honoring her, and I just want to thank you, thank her for all she gave to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you for being here. Thank you, Amy. All right, no other public comment. We'll move on to conduct of business.
Item A, adopt resolution accepting the city's comprehensive annual financial report and report of Measure A funds for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017.
Director O'Leary?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this item is the presentation of the city's annual audit and the Measure A report for city council approval. There's a resolution on your agenda. Just so that the public is aware, we had scheduled and held a study session earlier tonight, where the city council reviewed and heard directly from the city's independent auditor, a detailed presentation covering the importance of a CAFR and the components of a CAFR, detailed review of the audit process that is gone through, a high-level review of the financial statements contained in our audit report, and then responded to questions that the council had over the period of the study session. There were a number of questions raised by the council and topics of particular interest. I might just summarize that two of the topics of extensive conversation having to do with net pension liability and the impact of liability costs and pension costs, CalPERS costs on the city's finances. There was also an in-depth discussion on the status of various proprietary funds, and in particular, the status of the cable television fund. The auditors, the auditor from Mays and Associates is here, and so I would be glad to answer any further questions, and I'm sure the partner would also, if there's any questions prior to the city council actually adopting the resolutions.
Any questions from council? Any action from council? Is there a resolution?
I'll introduce resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we appreciate your presentation. He did get to speak for 45 minutes on the other side, so I don't want you to think we just left him up there.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, if I might, I just, there were comments made as we were rushing out the door, but if I could just take 30 seconds and just...
Take a minute.
...express my appreciation, and I think the appreciation the council and the city organization should have for the work that Darlene Wong did in the finance department in working with the auditors directly. You know, we spent 45 minutes today. Darlene really has spent, since July 1st, at the beginning of the new fiscal year and the closing of last year, and it's really been a six-month effort, and I just can't tell you, I don't believe there is an individual anywhere that is more dedicated to accuracy and doing whatever work is required on a day-to-day basis to get this CAFR and to get the city's financial statements in the correct and proper way. And, the auditors found that, in fact, all of our statements fairly represented the financial position of the city, and I just would like to acknowledge, and just add, the finance department over this year has had some vacancies, which has actually required Darlene to even do more work than normal. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
I appreciate you doing that, because the auditor did make mention of that to the council, and I do know, darling, because I see you, as I come in in the evening, and you're still there. So, thank you, as the rest of the team has done, to pick up where you need to, to make sure that this gets done, and it's a testament to your effort, your dedication, and I see it firsthand. it firsthand. So, to echo what Mr. O'Leary has said, on behalf of the council, thank you.
Next. You can clap for her. Next item of under conduct, Vicki. Item B.
Adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the city and county of San Francisco Public Utilities Commission for the San Andreas Pipeline Number Two Replacement Project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Before I turn it over to the project manager, SFPUC, to present on this project, as mentioned, this is, this item in front of you is in regards to the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the city and county of San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. And as you may recall back in 2015, a section of the 54-inch pipeline that is otherwise known as the San Andreas Pipeline Number Two ruptured, sending millions of gallons in water down through our city park. From that incident, SFPUC inspected the pipeline and are proposing to rehabilitate four segments in San Bruno from Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant to the Golden Gate National Cemetery. Staff has been coordinating with us, SFPUC, on this project, and the staff is here tonight to provide a brief presentation and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Janet Ing, project manager with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and I will be presenting the San Andreas Pipeline Number Two Replacement Project that we will be constructing in the spring of this year. Slide please. The SFPUC provides water to 2.7 million people in Alameda, Santa Clara, San Mateo, and San Francisco Counties. San Andreas Pipeline Number Two is a critical transmission pipeline that connects the Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant in northern San Mateo County to San Francisco. In addition to San Francisco, it serves the city of San Bruno, the city of South San Francisco, and the North Coast County Water District, or the city of Pacifica. This project was not a part of the WISIP, or Water System Improvement Program, which addressed seismic deficiencies in the system. This project was identified as a high priority in 2015 when a segment failed, resulting in the loss of about 15 million gallons of water. Upon inspection of one segment, it was discovered that the pipeline was severely corroded. San Andreas Pipeline Number Two was constructed of quarter-inch-thick lockbar steel in the 1920s, so some sections are over 90 years old. Lockbar steel pipe is basically two semicircles of pipe that are joined together by pressuring a bar to sandwich the longitudinal seams together. So, the pipe is not welded together. It's basically pretty primitive, but has lasted 90 years. So, next slide please. So, we will be replacing, rehabilitating approximately 6,500 feet of 54-inch diameter pipeline in four segments, as you can see here on the map here. As Jimmy mentioned, we will be starting at our Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant, and the last segment is at the Golden Gate National Cemetery. So, most of the pipeline work will be done by open trench and some by slip lining, where a smaller diameter pipe is pushed through the existing pipe. Open trench is the preferred method because it maintains the hydraulic capacity of the pipeline. Slip lining will be done where we have difficult access or where trenching across roads would be highly disruptive. Construction is anticipated to start in the second quarter of 2018 this year and finish the first quarter of 2020. Water supply will not be affected during construction. Next slide please. At Segment One, we will be replacing approximately 2,300 feet of pipeline. And again, as Jimmy mentioned, this is where the pipe failed in 2015. This segment spans from Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant to the Heneperal Sarah County Park. All work will be inside the treatment plant and county park, except at the crossing of Crystal Springs Road. Not sure if you can see that, but it's kind of at the top of the photo there. So, most of the work will be open trench, except we will be slip lining inside Harry Tracy due to access. So, we have worked closely with the county park staff, and we have an MOA that will be presented at their board meeting for approval in February. The park will remain open during construction. Next slide please. So, Segment Two, we will be replacing approximately 1,175 feet of pipe. This segment starts just north of Highway 280 and ends north of Peninsula High School. It runs parallel to Cortland Drive and Peninsula High School inside the Chinese Church grounds. All pipeline work here will be by open trench. We have been in touch with the church and high school to inform them of our activities and to ensure that we avoid any conflicts with their operations and services. In addition, we have an agreement with the high school to use property for staging. Next slide please. At Segment Three, we will be replacing approximately 2,750 feet of pipeline. So, this segment starts just east of the Highway 280 San Bruno exit ramp and ends just south of the 280 ramp behind the Mollystones Market and the YouTube Building. The majority of the pipeline work here will be open trench, except for the crossing of San Bruno Avenue, which will be by slip lining. We have worked with the Mollystones and YouTube staff to ensure that impacts will be minimal to their operations. Next slide. At Segment Four, which is one of the more complicated segments, we will be replacing approximately 1,450 feet of pipeline. This segment starts north of Highway 380 at the Cherry Avenue Villa, runs through the Peninsula Place, and ends at the Golden Gate National Cemetery. Most of the pipeline work will be done by open trench, except two locations. We will be slip lining about 80 feet under Highway 380, and we will have a trenchless crossing of Sneath Lane. We have had multiple meetings with the president of Cherry Avenue Villas and the general manager of Peninsula Place to discuss the project and to identify ways to minimize impacts to the residents. Next slide please. So, the project schedule, bids were received, and we anticipate construction to start the second quarter of this year and, again, finish the first quarter of 2020. Segment One will be the first since that was identified to be the most critical. The sequence of Segments Two, Three, and Four will be determined by the contractor's schedule and approved by the SFPUC. Each segment must be completed from construction to restoration within six months. Next slide please. We understand that construction can be disruptive, and we have built into our plans and specifications requirements to minimize disruption and to complete the work as quickly as possible. The contractor will submit and implement a noise control plan that complies with the city of San Bruno noise ordinances. Work will be between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. Hauling of equipment and materials will be scheduled outside of peak commute hours as much as possible. We will be performing pre- and post-construction surveys to document site conditions. We will protect utilities in place or reroute if necessary, and we will work with property owners and the city of San Bruno staff to repair damage caused by construction. In addition to complying with the California Environmental Quality Act, we will also be following the SFPUC's standard construction measures, which are designed to ensure environmentally responsible practices. We will have a full construction management team to monitor the contractor to ensure all work is in compliance with local ordinances. Next slide please. Since we will be working in a densely populated area, we have an extensive outreach program. Our communications team has been working with the residents, property managers, and local agencies since late 2016, and will continue to work with them through construction. Keeping affected neighbors informed about our work is important. We will have project signage and mailers prior to and during construction. We will provide updates to the homeowners, associations, and organizations, and present at board meetings if requested. We have been known to set up impromptu tables and coffee booths to reach affected neighbors and for one-on-one interactions. All information will be updated on our sfwater.org Peninsula website, and we will have a 24/7 answer line to respond to any questions from the public. That's, next slide please. That concludes my presentation, and I just wanted to take this time to thank city staff of San Bruno for their time and coordination with us, Jimmy Tan, Wing Wong, Michael Kittle, and Mark Zaffarano. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions of Jan? Marty?
Yes. The contractor, it's been selected already?
We received bids, and the apparent low bidder is Mitchell Engineering.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Irene?
Is it possible, of course, with city staff, if we can link up their website and phone number so that people can see it from our website? Okay, I think that would be good. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Laura?
Through the chair. There's a, your previous project that was completed on Whitman created an issue with the hillside because you dig up an area, and there's the earth, the sort of dirt settles, and now you've created sort of a path of leaf resistance for the water. And I think that there's what's going on now is you've got water damage going into that apartment building. So, I guess the question is, is going forward with this project, said so much of San Bruno, I guess it would be concern of what you've learned from that project and what you're going to be doing differently in this project.
Yes, we are aware of some of the practices and some of the construction that has affected previous properties, and we are working with the city of San Bruno, and even for this project, we understand some of the areas are very steep in slopes, and we have enlisted a geotechnical engineer to identify these problems and to basically design a solution for our work. I know, for example, one of the locations is inside the county park, and we do have steep areas, and we had an engineer perform a finite element analysis to basically tell us what we needed to do to keep that slope in place. And we are working with the county park, and they have brought this up to us too, that there are steep slopes and they're concerned about erosion. So, we do have that built into our plans and specs. Thank you.
Other questions? Jan? Any questions for Jimmy or staff? Any action by council? Is there a resolution?
I'll introduce the first, no, I'll waive the first reading.
No, this is just introduction of the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Introduce, I'll introduce the ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution. Ah!
That's the next one.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here, Jan. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item C, waive first reading and, excuse me, introduce ordinance amending Chapter 9.16 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to allow leashed dogs in specified city parks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is, coming back to you after direction that staff received at the last meeting, to craft an ordinance consistent with the City Council's direction. And that direction was to allow dogs under certain circumstances in some of the city's parks, in fact, in 14 of the 19 city parks. And those 14 parks are listed in the staff report, I won't read every one of them, but I will read the ones in which dogs are prohibited from and still will be if this ordinance is introduced and adopted. So, those parks in which dogs are, would still be prohibited are the Catalpa Todd Lot, Herman Park, Lomita Park, Ponderosa Park, and Posey Park. So, no dogs in those parks. Dogs are okay in all of the other parks, those are distributed all around the city, north, south, east, and west. And if you're going to bring a dog to those parks, there's some rules that you need to follow, and those are reflected in the ordinance. So, the first rule is no more than three dogs at a time, and those dogs have to be on leash. In fact, the leash has to be not more than six feet and not retractable, so not one of those 30-foot leashes that the dogs can go running out that really isn't within the handler's control. So, of course, the ordinance also reflects that owners and handlers need to pick up promptly after their dogs. City staff, if the ordinance is introduced and then later adopted, will be putting little stations in those parks with little bags and receptacles to put the dog waste in, so those are things that you need to use. And then finally, the other condition is that those dogs should not be entering areas, the surface areas around children's play areas or synthetic turf. So, not in synthetic turf areas, not in children's play areas. Elsewhere in the park, they're allowed on leash, you know, more than six feet, no more than three dogs, and pick up after them. So, the ordinance that you have in front of you contains all of those features, and it's here before you tonight, assuming that it's introduced this evening, then it'll come back at the next City Council meeting on the consent calendar for adoption, and then the ordinance would be effective 30 days after that. So, it would be 30 days from the next meeting that the dogs would be allowed in all of those parks. After adoption, and within that 30-day period, staff is going to be posting signs in all of those parks to let people know, and also, as I mentioned, the little stations with bags and receptacles. So, that concludes my staff report. The actions before you tonight are, first of all, to waive the first reading, and then secondly would be to introduce the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the Community Services Director, Carrie Burns, is also available to answer. Thank you.
We also have some, at least, I know one member of the public, with council, I'd like to hear it from the public.
Just one question. Would you be kind enough to clarify what you mean by no more than three dogs at a time? Do you mean I can only bring three dogs in, or there can only be three in the park?
Thank you, that's a great question. That was unclear. No, we're not going to go in the park and count the number of total dogs in the park. That's true. That would be tough. So, no, you can only bring three dogs. So, if there's 10 people, there could be 30 dogs in the park, I suppose, but it's three dogs per owner-handler. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from audience? Any questions from council? Okay. If not, is it, do we?
So, I would like to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
So, one at a time.
Make a motion.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made to waive the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance. Or just, I just want to introduce the ordinance.
Vicki?
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
No.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Thank you, this will be back on the consent calendar at the next meeting for adoption.
Okay, the last item under-
Item D, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Yost Associates for design of the Avenues 1 through 3 Sewer and Water Mean Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $383,352.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Before I discuss-
Jimmy, hold on, just for a moment, I apologize. Councilmember Medina?
I just wanted to clarify with our city attorney, I'm, my property lies within Avenues 1 and 3, and would it be appropriate for me to step out of the room for this, or how would that work?
No, generally, projects which involve infrastructure, street sidewalks, and so on, council members who are within 500 feet can vote on those projects and can participate so long as there's no material financial effect on their property specifically that's different than the effect of the project on everybody else in that radius, and I think that would apply in your situation, so I think you can participate. You're welcome.
Sorry, Jimmy, thank you, please continue.
No, not a problem. Thank you. So, before I discuss in detail about the project, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the status of the sewer CIP projects and how this Avenues 1-3 project is related within the overall work plan. The city completed both the water and sewer master plans, and the documents have been adopted by the City Council. The city also developed a prioritized 10-year work plan, and that took into considerations of their regulatory deadlines established by the settlement agreement with the baykeepers to complete the sewer capacity projects. The work plan also took into consideration replacement of all aging and undersized water infrastructure pipelines to improve flow, reduce pipeline leaks and main breaks, and replacement of all aging sewer pipelines to reduce infiltration inflow and ongoing maintenance. So, the first focus is to complete the sewer capacity projects per the settlement agreement with the baykeepers, and we've been making some progress on those projects. So, here's a slide that shows all the sewer projects that we're currently working to complete. We recently completed the Crestmore Canyon Project, which was accepted tonight. There are two projects under construction, one is the Spy Glass Pump Station, and the other is the San Mateo Avenue Water and Sewer Replacement Project, which started yesterday. The city also has several projects that are ready for a bid, and well, staff will be bringing those projects to council for construction, for the award of construction contracts. And those are the Crystal Springs Road Sewer Replacement Project, the San Antonio Avenue Sewer Replacement Project, and the Lomita and Crestmore Pump Stations Replacement Projects. And the Crestwood Pump Station is currently under design, we're at about 30% design stage as well. So, in addition to completing these capacity projects, the work plan also includes replacing the oldest infrastructure- the oldest infrastructure near the downtown area and surrounding neighborhoods. And these are the large-scale water and sewer replacement projects that the city is undertaking. This slide shows the upcoming sewer and water replacement project, so the avenues 1-1 and 1-2, it's at 100% design stage, we're currently finalizing the package for bid, and we're also waiting for the Semitale Avenue project to be completed first prior to commencing the construction on this project to minimize the impacts to the residents. The project before tonight is, in front of you tonight is continuation of this sewer and water replacement project that's indicated on the slide as avenues 1-3. And the purpose of this project is to reduce the risk of, you know, SSOs and improve the reliability of the water system by reducing the water main breaks. And being that the area is one of the largest, one of the oldest in the city, there have been a lot of water main breaks in these areas, and the project consists of installing approximately 7100 feet of water pipelines and 6600 feet of sewer pipelines. And this project is mounted by El Camino Real, Huntington Avenue, Taylor Avenue, Florida Avenue, and San Felipe Avenue. And both the water and sewer are being replaced at the same time to minimize the construction impacts to the public. And once the pipelines are constructed, the roadways are proposed to be repaved as well. The city issued a RFP for the design of the project back in October of last year, and staff received six proposals for this project. And the design services, the costs were also reviewed, and the cost ranged from $357,000 to $642,000. Since it's not a publicly bid project, like construction projects, the city is not required to select the lowest-cost firm, but rather select based on the qualifications of the firms and experience, and the staff, experience of this project manager and staff. Based on evaluation, staff is recommending West Yoast Associates to provide engineering design services for this project. And the firm has, has done a lot of work for the city, is highly qualified, and has experience to complete this project. They, the firm completed the design projects for the Genovin Avenue Sewer Replacement Project, which we accepted last year. We completed the Trenton Sewer Replacement Project, which will be coming to council for acceptance soon, and the project that's currently under construction, which is the Semitale Avenue Water and Sewer Replacement Project. So the costs for the consultant services for this work is about $383,000, and the scope includes preparing a technical memorandum, evaluating alignment alternatives, geotechnical investigation, corrosion design, potholing, surveying, and preparing the bid documents for construction. For the project schedule, staff estimates the design would take approximately 10 months to complete. If awarded, it's anticipated the design will be completed before the end of this year. And as for the fiscal impact, the project is within the established fiscal year 2017-18 CIP. The cost of this contract is within the total budget of $600,000 available in the current fiscal year. And this concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of council? To Jimmy?
Chair.
Michael?
I think I've brought this up before, but what about storm? Can you talk to the general condition of what we know, just based on experience in the area, the condition of the storm drains, and whether we should be considering including storm drains in the design? I know that we're always underfunded in that area, but I think we should at least consider if there's an opportunity, especially if we're talking about doing the whole package where we're going to repave and everything. And then the other question, the two-parter, is just the, how extensive of a repavement are we doing, and does this include a full anal, you mentioned potholing, but does that include a full analysis of the entire roadway, or only the parts that we're opening?
Okay. In regards to your first question about the storm drain system, there's, the master plan doesn't have any indication of any storm drain improvements in this area. We have large-scale capacity-related projects for storm drain that the storm master plan has indicated. And we have about 29, if I recall, $29 million worth of improvements that needs to be done for the storm drain system, which, as you're aware, we don't have any funding for. But in these areas, there's no storm drains that are recommended to be improved as part of the storm drain system. We have one storm drain project, which is the Pine Box, which, there's additional storm box covert that needs to be installed, and that will alleviate a lot of the storm issues that we have in our system towards the end of the storm system, where, before it reaches the San Bruno Channel. But in regards to the paving, the entire roadway will be repaved after, because, you know, being the new water and sewer system will be installed within the roadway, and some of the older pipelines are underneath the sidewalk, so we'll be relocating those into the roadway, so the entire roadway will be disrupted, you know, with the construction of the pipelines, so we will repave the entire roadway with.
Marty?
So for the material that you're looking at, are you, what evaluation, are you looking at PVC, or you?
We are, so we have to take a look at the soil corrosivity, corrosiveness in these areas. I know there's a highly, we ran into some highly corrosive soils in certain areas of the city, so we want to determine, want to have the geotech results first before we determine what pipe materials. If it's non-corrosive, we'll likely, we'll be using PVC pipelines, as it's, you know, there's a little bit of cost savings with that versus a ductile iron pipelines.
Okay. Any other questions? Staff, any action by council? Oh, I'm sorry.
One more question.
Mr. Salazar?
Any opportunity to do anything with lower laterals as we're replacing the mains there? Especially if there's a change in materials, would that automatically require us to change anything on the lower laterals? And then funding, I mean, any idea how that would impact? I know that in some other areas, we have addressed lower laterals along with the mains, so can you speak to that?
Correct. On the recent sewer replacement project, for instance, Genovin, which we replaced the main lines there, the city didn't replace the lower laterals, we connected back, we connected the lateral back to the main line, and it's because the lower laterals are the homeowner's responsibilities now for the sewer ordinance. And we'll be doing the same thing in these areas, but if the residents are interested in replacing their lower laterals, they can discuss that with the city, and then we can work with the contractor to try to get those replaced, you know, at the homeowner's cost.
And I would definitely like to see us, see what we can do once the roadway is open, because that would be a huge savings, I think, to the homeowners if they were to take advantage of that and sort of package it all together.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not any action? There's a resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. There are no reports of commission boards and committees. Comments from council members? Marty, please.
I got two things. My neighbor's house burned down, and I wanted to be sensitive and be, also express my appreciation for our first responders. I heard that the fire was pretty much right there, and some people told me that they were surprised that my house actually made it. So I am extremely grateful for, of course, my family, and grateful that nobody got hurt, those that were responding, those that, whose house that was. Until we know the cause of the fire, I think it's no point speculating the cause of it. I, as a former code enforcement officer here in San Bruno, code enforcement is a sticky, delicate business of interacting with the public, being sensitive, keeping the confidentiality of that property owner and their business and within their home. You could start a case on a property, and it could get fixed, and I recall while working here, that we tried as much as we could to provide plenty of time for the property owner to take care of the problem, and some people have recurring problems. So until we know the full story, I'm going to reserve comment on that, but I'm aware of the sensitivity and the need for more code enforcement. However, that's during the budget part of the process. We do have three, I believe, code enforcement officers now, so I look forward to that discussion about how we're going to make things better, because we could always try to make things better. My second comment is, is an announcement of the Pancake Breakfast that is coming up this Saturday at my favorite place, the American Legion. It's a great cause, starts at 8:30 to 11:00, all you can eat, pretty much. A great cause of supporting our veterans and getting to know some of your neighbors a little bit, so I invite you all to attend, and I look forward to help serving you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Irene?
I do have, for council consideration, this is in regards to our agenda and streamlining, some comments from council members, which I appreciate, and I know I have the ability to go ahead and make those changes, but I, again, as I said, it's going to be a collective decision as we go forward. And then for consideration, as was brought up, is taking item number five and number six, which is review of agenda approval of minutes, putting that under consent. Obviously, if there is something that needs to be reviewed and/or modified, staff or council can pull that item. Also, item number 11, which is report of commissions, boards, and committees, as was pointed out to me, anytime we do have one, we move it up, so why not just put it up to where we move it each time? They may seem like small changes, but items that are routine, and I think that we can do that just to help move the process along. In addition to that, I believe staff has, under conduct of business, has a lot of items that they bring forward, keeping in mind that every time an item is there, whether it's a yellow zone, it is pictures, it is presentation, it is prep work, it's not to say there is not a staff report, there always is. But those items, I've asked the city manager to ask staff, what items would be best served to move those to consent, so that we can start to tackle and discuss those bigger items with here and the council and in front of the community. So these are things and ways I believe that we can help to streamline the process. Of course, if we find it needs to be modified, we can do just that. But I think I'd like to have the city manager see what the staff feels would be items, especially there's a lot of public work projects, and I think that would be a way for staff also to utilize their time and resources best served to move the city forward. So is there any concern or comments for us to do that?
Michael?
I agree. I think anything we can do to make this process more efficient will be welcome, not only by us up here, but also by the public.
Okay. If not, Irene?
The only comment I have is, we try to make sure the public knows what we're doing, particularly in public work projects, so I wouldn't want the bigger projects anyway moved into consent calendars, so.
I totally agree. This is something like, like, let's say we had the yellow zone in the city park on the last agenda. Did that need to be a whole conduct of business, or we had a camera for $21,000? Did staff need to give a whole presentation? The staff report is there for the public to view, it's on the website, it's in our packets, but they're going through prep work, they're going through presentation time, and I'm, that's, those are those projects, but I'd like to hear from them what they would suggest would be correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. If there's no other, yes?
Mayor Medina, did you want to talk about the conference?
We'll do that at the next agenda. There was a conference, we were in Sacramento, I alluded to it earlier, and four of us were there, and I'll go ahead and give a better report. Okay, if there's nothing else, I want to adjourn this meeting in our city clerk's honor, Carol Bonner. As you know, or most of you may know, that she passed away on Monday morning, and San Bruno's elected city clerk, Carol Bonner, was elected to serve in that office for over 12 years. This is something that Carol will tell you, and has told us, that she had ran for it a couple times, and was not successful, but persevered and ran again. And she will tell you it is one of the most rewarding jobs that she was privileged to have, and it was because of her personality, enjoyed greeting folks, she would make immediate friends with everyone she met, and she has a passion for the San Bruno community. Carol stayed, as you know, very close to what she did in her profession, and involved herself and networked. And so one of the things that she was appointed to for the State of California in the city clerk's role was, because of her personality, was a sunshine role, and that's that the Association for the State of California put her, which is the hospitality of the city clerks. Carol also was very proud of her parish, St. Roberts, where she had served on the parish council and was involved with the in-betweens group. I will tell you that the staff is having a difficult time. On Monday morning, there were tears, hugs, but it was a compliment to our staff as they pushed through, and they continued their day, and they continued their job, and they were there to support each other, something that Carol would have done and has done when there's been other situations at City Hall. She will be missed, and I will tell you that our flags have been lowered, if you see that, it is for her public service as an elected official of the city that she represented and was elected by the people for 12 years to serve in that capacity. I was told that there will be services next Wednesday and Thursday, I do not know the specific times, but Carol was loved by many and will be dearly missed. I ask all of us to keep her family in your thoughts and prayers as they go through the grieving process and the loss that that family has suffered, and so has this community. So I ask you for a moment of silence, please. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on February 13th, right here at 7:00 PM. Everybody, have a good, safe rest of the week. Meeting adjourned.